Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, help us with our decisions that we have to make for the city. Help us to understand that these decisions have to be well thought through. Give us wisdom and the knowledge of expediency in these things. We pray in the name of peace. Amen.
City Clerk serves as sides publication in the Daily Record on October 15th. Notice for Pre-Council and regular City Council meeting October 19th, 2010. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in a white binder on the east of all legislative chambers.
If you have a cellphone or a pager, we ask that you turn it off or to vibrate. Also, just a reminder that it has been a practice that we do not allow any large placards or signs on display in the council chamber. And also you note that we have an empty seat today. Councilmember Mulligan, I believe is in Washington DC, accepting an award for his outstanding working career with the Union Pacific Railroad, so we congratulate him. Buster, I understand that we have some guests with us today.
Yes, we have some visitors from the Ukraine who are sitting back here observing city government. Would you please stand?
I had the opportunity of visiting with them earlier this morning, and they are very interested on how we operate here in the United States. So, welcome again. Mr. Clerk, first item.
Item number five, an ordinance authorizing a direct issue of general obligation refunding bonds of the City of Omaha in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $45 million should be termed for identification purposes of general obligation refunding bond series 2010. We have an amendment of the whole.
Public hearing was held on October 5th.
What will be the amendment of the whole?
Roll call.
Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed. I don't even do it, the amendment of the whole. It's passed seven to zero as amended. Item number six is resolution of preliminary official statement pertaining to the issuance and sale of general obligation refunding bond series 2010 is hereby approved.
Public hearing on item number six begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray, Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six to zero. Item number seven is an ordinance on second reading. It's an ordinance supplemental to ordinance number 37507 authorizing and directing an issue of additional bonds in one or more series not to exceed $70 million. Sanitary sewer system revenue and refunding bonds of the City of Omaha for the purpose, well, for the proposed identification sanitary sewer systems revenue refunding bond series 2010A and taxable sanitary sewer system revenue bonds series 2010B.
Public hearing on item number seven begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Items eight through 12 or one case. Eight is ordinance to approve an amendment to the land use element of master plan for the city to change the future land designation from low-density residential to office commercial for property located southeast of 90th and Blondo Streets. A planning board recommends approval. Planning Department recommends denial. Nine is ordinance to rezone property from R2 and CC2CC Community Commercial District. Ten is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate that district. The properties located southeast of 90th and Blondo Streets. A planning board recommends approval. Planning Department recommends denial. Eleven is resolution of primary plat entitled West Dodge Replat 7 is hereby accepted. A planning board recommending approval. Planning Department recommends denial. Twelve is the plat transmitted here with entitled West Dodge Replat 7 is hereby approved. A planning board recommending approval. Planning Department recommends denial. That's eight through 12.
Public hearing was continued today for items eight through 12. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road appearing on behalf of the applicant. I'm really here just to answer any questions that you might have and also respond to any opposition that there might be, if any. I'm prepared to go through whatever presentation you'd like me to go through as far as the recommendation of denial by the planning department, but based upon the recommendation of approval by the planning board, I just felt at this point, because it is a noticeable improvement of the area, that I'll just really wait for questions and respond to any opposition, if there is any. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Hello.
We're the Huggs. We live at 89th and Parker, right next door to 90th and Blondo.
We just wanted to say that our house is one of the properties that CBS is purchasing, so we have, you know, we're going to gain from this, but we still want to talk about how it will improve the neighborhood. And I just wanted to say that the lot next to our house, which is the one right on 90th and Blondo and Parker, right there, has been vacant for many, many years. About 10. Does this work?
Yeah. He'll turn it on for you.
Okay. Sure. That's the other.
There you go.
I don't know if you can see it very well.
There you go.
And that's...
Twenty years.
Twenty years, basically. That's what it's been. A dirt parking lot, right next door to our house. And it's been vacant with no house or anything on it for 10 years, and then the 10 years before that, it was a 24-hour daycare that also used that as a parking lot. And then we wanted to show you also, this is the end of the vacant lot, which is right on...
Just stairway to nowhere.
90th and Parker, which doesn't look very good going down 90th Street. It's a main street. It just seems to be not very aesthetically pleasing when you're driving down there. And I wanted to respond to something that was in the World Herald about four weeks ago. They had a article about a construction company that was closing up and about 140 jobs were being lost. And I think it's an example of what's going on in the whole working community. People are losing their jobs, and it's really nice that we have a company that's willing to come in, build in our area, improve the area, you know, because definitely it's going to be a big improvement over what is on that corner right now. And it's going to bring jobs, tax revenue, and...
Yeah, between the... Between those two and a half acres that's there right now...
Which is five properties.
The city is collecting $5,000 in taxes.
Which is only two of us are paying taxes.
Because the other people is all, on this land, is all tax exempt. With the CBS, you're going to get $100,000 plus every year.
Just in property taxes.
Just in the property taxes alone.
Not to mention the revenue that's going to bring in.
Not counting the jobs it's going to create building this place.
That's really all we wanted to say. I think it's going to be a big improvement to the area. And we plan on living if we move close in this neighborhood anyway, because it's very convenient and we'll be using that CBS. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents? Yes, one more. One more.
My name is Dorothy Williams. I live at 8907 Blondo. And I've lived there for over 50 years, so I've seen quite a change in the area. At one time, it was a nice neighborhood with families, and now it's, we have a condemned house with a pool in back that never, water's still been in it all these months. And I raised my family there. So, it was a peaceful, but, area, but there are commercial businesses on 90th and Blondo on three corners, and on 85th and Blondo, we have, I think, four corners that are businesses. So, I hear knocking at my door all times of night, people walking through the lots, at the point where I'd never been frightened before, living alone, but that has changed immensely. It's not a good area any longer. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jobin? Do you want to, I don't know what you want to rebut.
Larry Jobin appearing on behalf of the applicant. I'm just here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearings closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. This is my district, so I just wanted to give a little explanation of my opinion on the project. As we've talked before, and even just recently, I'm supportive of CBS entering the Omaha market, and I'm supportive of several projects they have in my neighborhood, my district, one being 72nd Maple Street, the other being this location, 90th and Blondo. I did not support the Fort 9th and Dodge project, as you all know, for lots of different concerns, but for me, it was character of neighborhood, character of design, traffic issues, and my constituents were overwhelmingly opposed to that project. But obviously, by what you've heard here today, we don't have that situation at this location, nor have I had very many, in fact, almost no contacts from constituents opposed to this location. And I think it is different. In fact, in my view, if anything, we got the recommendations reversed, Fort 9th and Dodge Street compared to 90th and Blondo here from the planning department. At this site, we have four corners of commercial development should this go through, and all would be full. We have two major thoroughfares coming through this location. We don't have the same type of concerns, and again, no opposition from surrounding neighbors. In fact, support from surrounding neighbors. So, with that, I am supportive of this project, and I would move to approve items eight through 12.
Second.
Mr. Cunningham, Planning Department. Just for the record, for those that may have concern, for those that live in the area that may have concern that are currently not impacted by this particular project, it is a fact that when a proposal is made to your department, you look at each and every one of them on a case-by-case basis. Is that correct?
Rick Cunningham, Planning Department. Yes, sir. We look at each case on its own merits.
On its own merit, okay.
And I would add, then we compare that with the master plan and look for direction and guidance from the master plan to make a recommendation.
Thank you. No further lights. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all passed six to zero. Item number 13, ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Omaha adopted by section 5565 by converting the Omaha zoning classification area of Douglas County added to the City of Omaha's three-mile zoning jurisdiction. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 13 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed at six to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7E, the agenda items number 14 through 17 should be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Special use permit, item number 18, resolution special use permit application for a special use permit to allow restaurant, drive-in, or fast food in a general industrial district located southwest of 84th and F Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 18 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, I'm Don Echols, representing Boundless Enterprises, and I'm just here in case you need me to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six to zero. Item number 19 is resolution special use permit application for permission to allow daycare general in an R435 single-family residential district, high density, located at 3368 Grand Avenue is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 19 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hi, I'm Nikia Vassar-Bry, and I'm applying for the special use permit at 3368 Grand Avenue for home-to-child care, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
If you guys have them.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six to zero. Item number 20, resolution special use permit application for, to allow a daycare general in an R4 single-family residential district, high density, located at 5029 South 133rd Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 20 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six to zero. Liquor, item number 21, curtain clides at 2202 South 13th Street. New application, no location for Class C liquor license. They're adding a beer garden to the east and requesting an increase in the building size. You have a communications, Jay Davis, if you wish to grant this, you need to grant a contingent on their getting all their proper permits.
Public hearing is continued today on item 21. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for the two-week layover. Over the two weeks, myself and the applicant were able to sit down, planning, and President Garnett ironed out some issues they had. All those issues were prior to this application, but now it looks like we've got everything taken care of, as long as the work is done, and it will be in compliance with all inspections and permits. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Lisa, would you like to go on record as being here? That was a high five, okay. Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve something to permits and inspections.
Second. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passed the second time for potential conflict of interest. It is adopted 501 passing. Item number 22 is Element 1 at Midtown Crossing at 3253 Dodge Street, Suite 1103. New application, new location for Class C liquor license. You have communications from the applicants requesting amendment to correct the corporate name.
Public hearing on item number 22 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hello, my name is Eric Rock. I'm with the Element Hotel at 3253 Dodge Street. I'm just really here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Second. That's on the amendment?
It's on the amendment.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted as amended, six to zero. Item number 23 is Wingstop 1110 South 71st Street, Unit A. New application, new location for Class I liquor license.
Public hearing on item number 23 begins now. Are there any proponents? He's here.
Hi, Robert Morrison, 4323 North 173rd Street. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Any samples? Oh, that's right.
Look at the ring snap.
Of the wine or the wine?
Where did I lose control? Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Second. No lights, roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, six to zero. Item number 24, The Grey Plum, 220 South 31st Avenue, Suite 3101. Request permission for an addition to the present, their pending Class I liquor license of the mezzanine area approximately 10 feet by 7 feet for storage.
Public hearing on item number 24 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hello, Clayton Chapman, representing The Grey Plum. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, six to zero. Item 25, The Quick Shop, number 693 at 5306 North 103rd Street. Request permission for reconstruction of the present packaged liquor license location and to change the store name to 673.
Public hearing on item number 25 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, President, council members. My name's Jimmy Lewis. I'm here representing Quick Shop. Can you answer any questions the council may have or any opponents?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted six to zero. Item number 26, Louis Bar and Grill at 5702 Northwest Radio Highway. Request permission to appoint Paul Miller manager.
Public hearing on item number 26 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Don Greenberg, 9104 Davenport, representing the owners of Louis Bar and Grill. Be happy to answer any questions.
And Paul Miller, 4317 North 91st Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed, removed from the consent agenda should be taken up by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, as otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearings on agenda items numbers 27 through 31 were held on October the 5th. Do we have a motion? Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all passed seven to zero, or six to zero.
Public hearings on agenda item numbers 32 through 49 begin now. Are there any proponents through 32 through 49? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. No lights, roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted, six to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 50 through 52 shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance is on second reading. Item 53, ordinance declaring necessity of acquiring property for the purpose of the sewer separation project near 20th and Poplin Streets.
Public hearing on item number 53 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 54, ordinance to transfer a permanent easement of land upon city-owned property located Adams Park to the Metropolitan Utilities District.
Public hearing on item number 54 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 55, ordinance to accept from Lyman Ritchie Corporation for public use the donation of a piece of real property located near the intersection of 192nd and Dodge Streets, which provides access to the new West Omaha Park.
Public hearing on item number 55 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 56, ordinance to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Omaha and Douglas County School District, Number 1, to provide for jointly operating an emergency assistance, or employee assistance program.
Public hearing on item number 56 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 57, ordinance to amend sections 36-232, summary removal authority, and 36-235, payment of cost for removal and storage, proof of licensing and registration.
Public hearing on item number 57 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Marty Convoy, City Prosecutor. I'm here both to answer questions and to give a brief explanation of what this law would do as written. Right now, in Nebraska, it's a crime to drive a car without insurance, and we prosecute about 7,500 or more of those cases a year. The dilemma that police face when they're encountering this crime is that after they arrest the person, they put them back in the car, and they continue to drive off without insurance. And from time to time, they run into somebody, and that person is left with liability and no insurance to recover from. And that, especially troubling when the person who's the victim doesn't have any insurance for their car, they're just pretty much out of luck. It is currently not required or even permitted to tow that vehicle in that situation, and this law would do a couple of things. It would, first of all, give discretionary authority to the police department to set up policies where those vehicles could be towed and taken to the tow lot if they are operated in violation of the state law. It also requires that the tow lot be provided with proof of current insurance on the vehicle It also requires that the tow lot be provided with proof of current insurance on the vehicle before the vehicle be released. It's even illegal to tow a vehicle in Omaha if it's uninsured under state law. So this would prevent those cars from being back on the street still uninsured. And right now, there is no law governing this. It's very common as to what's done in other cities throughout the United States. Most of them do have a discretionary law rather than a mandatory towing law.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, was there someone else in the House that wanted to speak? Okay. I'd like to say that Warren Weaver, council staff. Staff? Were you able to talk to the impound lot on this issue?
Oh, yes, I've talked to him a couple of times, absolutely.
And what is their position on it?
They were in favor of this.
In fact, I think-
They were strongly in favor.
Strongly in favor. So this is something that's long overdue, and I'd like to say the inspiration for it actually came from calls from the citizenry, and also a couple of policemen actually wanted this to happen. And for the record, I'd like to say that Gary Garnett was the inspiration back some five years ago when this did not get enough steam. And so we build on each other's efforts, and I wanted to thank Gary for providing the framework and the foundation for that. But this is just good policy, and we need to go ahead and make sure we close these loops. I'm sure that all of you at one time or another, and if you haven't, just wait around, but you will get hit by somebody that doesn't have insurance. And it's a very, very frustrating experience to have to go through. So this kind of closes the loops, and it cuts across all socioeconomic classes. It doesn't pick on the poor any more than it does middle class or upper class, and it just encourages people to have insurance and to obey the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Stothard?
Thank you. Mr. Convoy?
Marty Convoy, City Prosecutor.
Just a point of clarification. In your comments just a minute ago, you just said that right now it is against the law to tow a car if it doesn't have insurance?
That is correct.
So does that mean this ordinance if passed will enable you to do that?
No.
Because you still are going to be towing a car without insurance to the impound lot.
Well, by towing, I think what we run into is people come to the impound lot now and say, "Well, I'm not going to drive the car. I'm going to tow it away, and that way I can get around having to license it." This would say to the effect, they're not going to release it at all until it's insured. So even if-
But I guess my point is, the police can tow a car without insurance, though?
Right. It applies to the owner of the vehicle.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to clarify. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next item.
Resolution, item number fifty-eight, resolution attached agreement between the City of Omaha and the Elkhorn Suburban Fire Protection District, number two, providing for equitable adjustment of all matters between the two entities growing out of the City of Omaha's annexation effective two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine.
Public hearing on item number fifty-eight begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Yes, we can. We can? Public hearing today, you should be able to pass it today. Should say that. Thank you. Have a motion and a second to pass. No lights, roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem, Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, six to zero. Now we'll take items fifty-nine and sixty together to the landfill. Fifty-nine is resolution application by Hawkins Construction Company for expanded limited refuge and demolition debris landfill permit for the property located south, at the southwest corner of Sixtieth and Q Street is hereby approved subject to site and operation plans. And sixty is resolution, site approval pursuant to Nebraska provides statutes is hereby granted to Hawkins Construction Company.
Public hearing on items fifty-nine and sixty begin now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, one hundred and fourteen forty West Center Road, appearing on behalf of Hawkins Construction Company. This is the request for local siding, which comes under state law. If you recall, the special use permit was actually heard and approved by this council on September fourteenth, so the land use decision really has been made. What this does with the request for local siding upon this council's approval is it starts the Department of Environmental Qualities process and permitting process moving forward with respect to the landfill site. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and respond to any opposition if there is any. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Proponent?
Is this about the landfill?
Yes. Are you for or against?
I'm George Carmel. I live right across the street from where the landfill it wants to go. Okay. You guys are mumbling back there. I got hearing aids. I can't hear you. So if you want to talk, speak up to that mic, I'll be able to hear you. How's that? Is that fair?
Fair enough. Are you for, are you for or against?
First of all, my first topic is, I don't want the landfill.
Okay. We're still on those that are in favor of this. I'll call you up in a moment, okay?
Oh, you don't lock me up here yet?
Right. We're still on those that are in favor of it.
In favor of it?
Yes. You're not, we'll call you up in a moment.
I'll be right here. I'm not going anywhere.
Okay, just, don't go too far. Are there any other proponents on items fifty-nine or sixty? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Sir?
No.
Anyway, getting back to me. I've been living on that corner for fifty-seven years, and I've had it with landfill up to here. So now they're proposing to put this berm, it's called a berm. Do you gentlemen know what a berm is? Do you know what a berm is, Mr. Garnett? Okay, how about this alabaster? You know what it is?
Just, just direct your, just direct your testimony to us, sir.
Okay. The berm wants to be X number of feet up. Okay, what I'm interested in, I have a bunch of stuff, but I didn't write the topics down, but I'm going to remember some of these things, and I'd like to have some answers to what's going to happen if this thing flies. It's probably going to fly because I can't fight City Hall. Anyway, one of the big topics that I have in my mind is when this thing is going to be developed, who is going to take care of the rodent problem? There are going to be probably a rodent problem after this thing gets going. Because they had the last landfill, there was a rodent problem over there when they had a landfill, when it was open as a landfill before, before Hawkins had it. Now, topic number three that I have is where is all this water going to go if we get a real heavy deluge of rain? Where is this water going to go? Is there provisions for that water to dissipate, or is it going to be flooded? That's my third one. And my fourth one is, after the trucks are in there hauling the debris in there and they're coming out on the street on rainy days and snowy days, who is going to keep that street clean? Are we going to have a, are we going to have a maintainer there that's going to keep, keep order in that landfill when they start bringing in this material? I've seen some of the material that they're bringing in there, and I tell you, it's everything that's in there. They said there's not supposed to be any garbage. Well, I hope there's no garbage in it because that's, that'll cause more problems. Okay, that's so much for the rain and the snowy days. And so maybe, maybe we'll get something done on that street because the street itself is deteriorating, it's falling apart, it's very old with all of these trucks there coming in there. And I also have another friend down the street who operates the junkyard. He also has big trucks going in and out of there. So I have a steady stream of trucks that go there, and sometimes they, sometime, and when they hit that Q Street, when they're going back empty, they want to make the, make sure they get through the yellow light, and they're going pretty fast and makes a lot of noise. So on the days of, so much for the rainy day. Now how about the dust? What's going to happen on days when we get a nice, big, heavy wind blowing, and what's going to happen to all the dust that's going to be blowing around that neighborhood? So I don't know if I've covered all the topics, but those are the main topics, I think. They've been covered, and I'm especially kind of concerned about that rodent problem because I don't want any guys coming over that hill and patronizing my yard. Because I, I'm not going to, I don't have a gun. I can't have a gun to have a, if I get caught shooting something out there, I'll probably be put in jail. So we got to control that before it all happens. So all I ask is to keep the place, if it's going to go, is keep it neat, keep it up to snuff, because down the street is Horseman's Park. Horseman's Park is very neat, they're very particular how they keep their property. And there's no reason why this landfill can't be kept in an orderly manner, so therefore we won't have all these problems on the street. That'll be my topic for today.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
My name's Claude Stoich, fifty-nine, eleven S. I've lived in the neighborhood basically all my life except my service years and my first few years of marriage, built a new home there in seventy-eight. There's been a Stoich in that neighborhood since nineteen twenty-six. My grandfather went broke on a farm in Minnesota and came back to Omaha. So I've been down here in the past when Tom, Steve Thomasek was the president, he was our councilman from that district, just like you are, Gary. And I came back when my children were all school age, on bicycles. We didn't need that traffic then. But I'd report now that my children are grown and adults, and I have grandchildren on bicycles right now. And like George was saying about the dust, I, my wife mentioned to me that our gutters should be looked at, and a couple of leaf guards came off and got up there yesterday. Pretty nice strong wind from the north, I don't know if you noticed. And Hawkins has not been a good neighbor ever. When this attorney here had a meeting at Horseman Park, another neighbor says, "You're not good neighbors. You haven't mowed the grass." This is in June. The grass had not been mowed yet that year. I mean, hey, you know, it starts usually growing in April, you know? Haven't been mowed once. They're not good neighbors. I was on the roof yesterday, seen the side, side dump, large eighteen-wheelers that they use to haul dirt in and what have you, their debris in. Good north wind, I was up on the roof. The dust is ball like George says. There's been no maintenance there. When SITDA had the park, they did maintain a bit. They had a maintainer there, they washed the street down, but it hasn't been since SITDA, where the Horseman Park is now, is sitting, has been maintained. Dirt, whatever comes out on the road. George is a hundred percent right about the dust and dirt. These people have not been good neighbors. I think this attorney also said there's been a landfill in the neighborhood since seventy-four. That would have been Charlie Olson's place. He passed away, and I don't remember, it was before I left for the service or right after I left. You know, thirty-six years. That area is not agricultural anymore. There's Horseman Park, there's all the Hansons or auto recyclers. It's not agricultural. There's Milt's Golf Course on the other side. We don't need this. We've been subjected to this for thirty-six years. I'm sixty years old. That's over half my life. Don't you think it's time we say no? You know, hey, you guys aren't good neighbors. There's dust, there's dirt. We don't need it. I'd like you to reconsider this because it's time. It's time to say no. When is enough? That is my whole point. It's enough, time to say no to this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mrs. Stothard?
Um, do we want to give Mr. Jobin a chance or should he?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jobin. You need to say rebuttal instead of answering questions. Then I'll write the R-word down.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Larry Jobin, one hundred and fourteen forty West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant-
For the record, if you're a rebuttal, okay.
Yes. Just to address a few things. Again, the special use permit was already approved September fourteenth, but, and we didn't get into a lot of this then, but there was no opposition at that time either. But we did go through this at the planning board meeting, planning board recommended approval, and then we went through it at city council meeting on September fourteenth. And of course, this council approved the special use permit, so it is permitted from a zoning perspective. This is really the start of the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality permitting process, and what it requires, and what we're here today to do is for local siding purposes. But I can go through this a little bit with you here. This is Horseman's Park, of course. This is the existing landfill, and this is the area that we're talking about expanding into. Actually, the existing landfill even covers a portion of this property here. The, this entire area actually has been a construction demolition landfill since nineteen seventy-three, and including this piece right here, which is about sixteen point one acres. Of the sixteen point one acres, only about eleven and a half of the acres are actually going to be used as part of this expansion. One of the things that we wanted to make sure we did in doing the expansion is to make sure that we really minimize the impact of the adjacent property owners. And by doing that, we have redesigned the existing waterway that is just linear along Q Street. There's going to be an additional dedication right away for the Q Street widening. There will also be a relocation of the stream, so it's more meandering and more of a nice aesthetic feature along Q Street, along with a significant amount of landscaping. And then I'll get into the birmingham process here in a little bit, but this, this will happen day one prior to any import being brought into the site. So the whole idea is to improve Sixtieth Street, to improve Q Street, and then also we've agreed with Horseman's Park on a landscape buffer along the western portion of the property that will go into effect as well, and we'll be planning and birmingham that probably in the spring. And Mr. Kelly is here on behalf of Horseman's Park to let you know if you have any questions there, but we've already agreed on the Horseman's Park side that this is going to be fine. So what we have here is, the whole purpose was to create really this sculptured landfill when it's completed. And this area is significant enough that down the road, it could be used as a park-like setting. Again, there's two hills here that the import will be brought into, and the way it's going to be brought into the site is through birmingham, as I explained before. And again, these are heavily regulated sites by the Department of Environmental Quality. Also, the Douglas County Health Department oversees the operations as well. So everything that's brought in has to be a material that's acceptable under the state law. They have to have someone on site that's educated and knowledgeable about the materials that come in and out of the site. If a material comes into the site that's not permitted, that has to be removed within twenty-four hours. There has to be contingency plans to deal with dust, stormwater. All these things have to be taken care of. Even natural disasters, plans have to be in place with respect to these types of sites. So what's going to happen here is day one, before any imports brought into the site, there will be, of course, the relocation of the flow channel. There'll be this phase-one berm, which is about ten to twelve feet in height, and the landscaping will be installed day one. So when the first future import comes in, it'll go up to the elevation of the phase-one berm. Then before any additional imports brought in, there'll be a phase-two berm that's brought in, and then the import will be brought up there, and so on and so on. So what this is designed to do is really minimize the impact of the adjacent property owners, because what we're hopeful of is that they really won't see anything that's going on in the middle. The other thing that we did, I guess I should point out, on this overall master plan, there's currently two access points into the site. We're actually closing off one of the access points, so there'll only now be one access point into the site. They're extending the sidewalk also all the way along Sixtieth Street, and there's a sidewalk being extended all the way along Q Street as well, which currently doesn't exist. So there's a substantial number of improvements that are actually being made to the site before anything is going to be done with respect to the construction and demolition landfill. I'd also point out that, maybe this is just a couple, this is what it looks like today. You can see it's just linear in nature, there's scrub trees along Q Street. What it will look like down the road is a nice sidewalk, the relocated flow channel, and then of course, the birmingham and the landscaping, and this is along Sixtieth Street, or, I'm sorry, along Q Street, running east and west. This is another exhibit that shows, I don't know if it's better to go in or out, looking at the demolition landfill upon completion from off Q Street, and you can see again the sidewalk, and then you can see the birmingham here behind the landscaping. And this is the look from our street, looking west along Sixtieth Street. Again, significant amount of landscaping and the birmingham going on there. I would also point out that it's only about eighteen trucks a day that go through the site, so that's one and a half trucks per hour given a twelve-hour day. There's actually, I believe, fifty-seven hundred cars and trucks that move southbound on Sixtieth Street currently. So this site actually has less than one percent of the traffic along Sixtieth Street. So Hawkins is really not the problem here, and you know, one of the things that the neighbors wanted to know when we met with them privately at the meeting is when will Sixtieth Street be expanded and improved? And really, that's more of a city issue. It's not really a Hawkins one because we have such a small portion of the amount of traffic. Unfortunately, there's a lot of industrial uses along Sixtieth Street, it just, it gets a lot of truck traffic. I don't know that the traffic council will ever support a significant improvement to Sixtieth Street south of Q, but when and if it does, I'm sure the city will be there to make that happen. But with respect to this particular site, we have just such a low impact with respect to traffic on Sixtieth Street. And of course, there's no access points on Q Street at all. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding this. And again, this is local siding. I think the land use decision's really already been made last month, so thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Stothard?
Jobin, you just, you just answered almost every question that I had, so it was good you had that time. But the one thing I did want to ask you, as far as Hawkins Construction goes, I mean, Hawkins does a lot of, lot of work with the city, and I know they're going to be making bids for a lot of the sewer separation project that we have. And is it not true that if they, they have the capability for a local landfill to put their debris, that they could turn around and obviously offer better cost on their bids? cost on their bids, that they don't have to haul it away somewhere else?
Yes, actually, one of the, and I don't have the, the... I had it with me, um, one of the things that you'll notice on the, um, resolution is there's a list under, I believe it's, um, uh... Wait, here it is, right here. Right in front of me. Uh, there's a list of the items that we have to show under the local siting, which is Nebraska revised statute 131702. One of the items, uh, states that, um, the solid waste disposal area or solid waste processing facility is necessary to accommodate the solid waste management needs of the area in which the solid waste disposal area or the solid waste processing facility is intended to serve. I think that's your point right here. That's, um, item number one on the letter that went to the council. And I think you're right, the whole sewer separation, uh, that's coming up, um, this will allow Hawkins at least to be competitive in his bidding process because they'll have a convenient place to store the, the important materials.
Well, I think with, uh, all the questions that the gentleman asked and your rebuttal, you answered it, but the one question, you said it was, "Why do we need it?" And, and this would be an explanation of why we need it.
That's correct.
It, uh, and, and what would Hawkins do if this wasn't approved? They would, would they need to haul, or haul their debris somewhere else?
They would actually probably have to cite another, uh, location somewhere else, um, which is a very expensive process. Again, this, this particular location makes a lot of sense because it's been operated as a construction demolition landfill since 1973. Um, it just makes sense to do it here. And I think the way they decided to do it, uh, even makes more sense because it does minimize the impact of the adjacent residential and other uses, um, along Q and 60th.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Jobin, at the height of the berm, how high will it be?
It's, at the height, it's about 50 feet above grade elevation at the two peaks.
Okay.
Um, but it, but it's a three to one slope, so it's a gradual slope up. Um, I, I do have a comparison between the, uh, what it would look like in relationship to the area just to the east and it's about the same elevation. I don't know if you'll be able to see this very well. But the elevation at the top of the two peaks here will match the elevation less than really a half block away. So you're, you'll have hills really on both sides of 60th Street, so it won't be a noticeable difference between, uh, to the east and to the west. And then with the landscape buffer with Horseman's Park, we think we've addressed that, uh, side of the project as well.
And then second, the gentleman, um, seems to think there might be a rodent problem. Are you planning on dealing with that chemically or...
No, there shouldn't be, this is a, what they call a non-purtrensible landfill, so only certain materials can be brought in. It's mainly rocks.
Concrete.
Concrete, rocks, dirt. There's no fuel tanks, there's no tires, uh, there's no solid waste, household waste. I mean, it's really limited to construction and demolition type materials.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jobin, uh, both Claude and George, uh, I think brought up some legitimate concerns, but I also feel that you've legitimately, uh, addressed those concerns, uh, except The, the amount of dust, I did not hear, uh, what application would be for dust control. I'm, I'm assuming that there is some sort of logistical plan to take care of that as you went through the list for as far as water, uh, rodents, uh, grass, those types of things and what would be applicable for all of these imports? Did I miss the one on dust control? It would certainly...
Yeah, I mean, the operator, the operator is required to protect adjacent properties, certainly under the, I think under our special use permit that we have and also under the Department of Environmental Quality permit with the EQ. You know, one of the things that we talked about and Chris Hawkins was, uh, present at the neighborhood meeting and, and I think he tried to assure the, the people that, you know, if they ever have a problem, please call him directly if need be. He gave them their telephone number. He said he would get someone out there right away if, if the weeds aren't mowed, if there's dust problems. He said he'd be happy to address anything, uh, that goes on out there at the site and he apologized if in the past it hasn't been done adequately. But, but the, the plan would be to, to obviously minimize dust, minimize weeds and minimize the impact on the adjacent property owners.
Okay, so we have it through your verbiage of what happened at, uh, the meeting with the, with the neighbors that are gonna be adequate measures put into place to deal with any type of impact, uh, according to what the law says and what concerns that the neighbors have and that Hawkins would respond via any complaints that would come through their company. Is that accurate?
That's correct. That's correct.
All right. And just to make sure that both of the gentlemen that are in opposition clearly understand why we are here today is that everything that has been required by law since this application came forward has been approved up until on September 14th of this year. Uh, permit, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? And now, what is, what we're here today for is the next step to send what has been done in a site plan to the state of Nebraska, to the Department of Environmental Quality. And then they go through a series of hoops, which I understand also includes a public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay. So there would be another opportunity for the opposition to come forward and explain their concerns through this process as well?
That's true.
Okay. And I, I believe you and I have talked and, and that process just doesn't happen overnight.
No, it's about a year process. So from, from the time that the land use decision was made, which was last month, September 14th, on the special use permit, the zoning was already in place, but it required a special use permit and then this local siting request, now the application will be made to the Department of Environmental Quality, which is about a nine-month to a year process from what I understand.
Okay. And that's why we're here today, set that forward because everything else has already been put in place?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Stube on 60th Street, uh, south of Q. And I would say from, um, the curve south to Harrison Street, there has been, um, correct me if I'm wrong, my memory serves me correct, three, uh, reconstruction and resurfacing, uh, say within the last six years. Is that fairly accurate?
Um, you're, Bob Stube, Public Works, uh, your memory's probably better than mine, uh, council member on, on that particular reconstruction, but I do know that there has been some resurfacing that has taken place on that section that you discussed.
Okay, so from the curb north to Q Street, which I believe our, our opposition is gravely concerned about and rightly so, um, is there a blip on the radar screen to do anything with that? I believe Mr. Jobin, uh, said that there was a count of around 5,700 cars on that. Do we have any, uh, indication whatsoever that 60th Street between Q and the curve will, uh, have any type of resurfacing or reconstruction within a reasonable timeframe down the road, say, uh, three to five years?
With regard to reconstruction, there's nothing within our current capital improvement program related to 60th Street south of Q Street. But with regard to resurfacing, uh, it's always something that potentially is looked at on an annual basis and is evaluated by staff within Public Works, uh, concerning resurfacing.
Uh, but it is, uh, it should be crystal clear that the Public Works Department, either from, uh, the mayor's hotline or direct contact with, uh, the Public Works Department at 4919, 444-4919, or even from our office, that you would respond to, uh, those types of complaints?
That is correct. Uh, anything with regard to, uh, to pothole complaints that might come through, uh, if we do get complaints relative to mud on the street, that's something also that we will address and we will communicate also with Hawkins related to that.
Okay, so there will be a communication between the Public Works Department and this applicant based upon any concerns that, uh, neighbors would bring forward?
That is correct.
Okay. I see, uh, no further lights?
Excuse me? Can I add a few words?
I'll call you back up, George. I'll give you a...
This gentleman, that's the lawyer for Hawkins. You're the lawyer? I would like to have copies of all that stuff that he's proposing, like a blueprint. And what's gonna happen to this neighborhood, my neighborhood is gonna be ruined because I'm gonna have this big wall of dirt right out of my living room window. So that's not gonna be a pretty sight. You can't paint the dirt, so he's proposing to put trees up there and make it look nice. But anyway, the, my whole neighborhood's gonna be shot. My house probably won't deteriorate, I won't be able to even sell it, I have to give it away. So that's my gripe right now about this thing going up and, uh, the way it's gonna happen and the way he's talking about all this sidewalk business. So what you gentlemen, if this thing gets going, I'd like to invite you to come over and take a look at it when it's all said and done. And you will see what this thing is gonna do and what it's gonna do to that neighborhood over there. That would be my proposal to invite you personally to come over and have a good look. Right now, it's all big field, it's a big grassy field. That's all it is. And my wife, when she was living, she talked to Fred Hawkins and he promised her that nothing would ever happen to that piece of ground, it would stay the same. Well, it's not happening. Now they've got this idea that they wanna propose for this flat piece of ground because they don't want to go anywhere else, it's gonna cost them too much money to haul this debris if they find a different place to dump it. Right now, they got it right in their front door, it's pretty handy. Come right down 60th, right there at the corner and dump it in there. So, uh, anyway, I hope the guy upstairs can help me in this situation. So I still leave it open to invite you gentlemen to come over and see what this thing's gonna do to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no further lights, we have a motion in a second? We have a motion in a second? Uh, just send this down to the state for the next round of, uh, of approvals. No further lights, roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted on a six-zero vote. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, Agenda Item Number 61 should be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing.
All done?
Yes. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on Agenda Items 62 through 69 shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on Agenda Items 70 through 75 and Item Number 78 on the supplemental agenda shall be held on the second reading.
Seventy-six, seventy-six, Mr. Clark?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Item Number 76 is the Chairman of Board of Equalization reports approval of the plans and assessments made at the regular meeting held October 5th.
Clerk will entertain a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
We have a second? No lights, roll call?
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes. Thank you all.